I mean, there was so much that went on.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to go ahead and call the meeting of Placerville City Council for June 11th to order and ask everybody, please, rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, and again, good afternoon. Would I like to ask the clerk to please call a roll?
Mayor Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let me note that the council is all in attendance this afternoon. Announcements and presentations to the public. Item three we haven't done this afternoon, closed session report. Mr. Driscoll, I understand you have an item to report.
I do, sir. Thank you. I would like to report that in closed session today, the council approved a tentative agreement with Local 39. The agreement will be brought back to the council for approval of a formal agreement in open session, but the agreement does provide for some rate pay increases, 3% I believe this year, cost of living increases the next two years. There is a termination in July 1st of 2020 of the retiree health payments, I believe, and then some other cleanup language.
Hey, sir. Do you need to report out the vote?
And I should say, that's what I was just going to say.
Thank you, sir.
That all council members present, with the exception of Councilmember Borelli, who had to abstain and recuse herself, but all the rest of the council members present voted to approve the agreement.
Thank you very much, and we will bring it up when it comes back, but thank you too to all of our staff members that have worked hard on negotiations this year. We appreciate your time and dedication to that process and to all of our employees as well. All right, moving on to item five, adoption is the agenda. Is there an adoption?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The agenda is adopted. Ceremonial matters, we've had a lot of them going on around us, but we don't have any of them here this evening. Item seven, public comments. This is the opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to address the council on a non-agendized item. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and your subject matter to items that are pertinent to the business of the city council. Is there anyone in the audience this afternoon that would like to address the council?
Afternoon, Michael Drobish Placerville.
Mr. Drobish.
City is responsible for potholes, so this would, any comments to potholes would be appropriate?
We have a lot of them.
I know, and we also have a Measure L, and I did support it on the notion that potholes were going to be addressed, and I really think they're not. So, fair warning, potholes don't start getting filled, I'm prepared to repeal Measure L.
Okay, fair enough. The only thing I will say in the public work, well, not the only thing, but allow me to say this from Public Works defense, even though it's almost 100 degrees outside, their ideal weather has only really been around for about the last two weeks, including this week. We had rain on Memorial Day, so you don't fix potholes in a rain. So noted, and we will, I'm sure we will hear more about this in a positive manner. Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agendized
Sue Rodman, member of the Measure H and L Committee, and while it takes a while to get these projects done, they are moving forward, and I would invite Michael Drobish to come to the Measure H and L meetings and give his comments there as to what he sees as the priority setting, because it's the five members of the Measure H and L Committee who go through this along with our city engineering department and look at what do we think the needs are and what do we think the priorities are. So, invitation, come to the meetings.
Sue, before you leave, do you happen to remember when the next meeting is scheduled?
September, I believe. I'll look to.
I believe it's the first Monday in October.
Ah, okay, so it's a while, but anyway, it's noted.
But in the meantime, the work is proceeding.
Thank you.
It's just not always totally visible because it's getting done in various places, but you can't tear the whole city apart in one year and fix everything. A, you're not bringing in that much money, and B, people would really complain if everything was torn up all at once.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, I stand corrected, October 14th at 6:00.
Okay, October 14th at 6:00, but we will obviously have a lot of answers before that happens. A lot of potholes filled, too, I would hope. All right, is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item?
Hi, Eric Nelson. I read in the paper recently that one city solved their pothole problems. They worked up a deal with Domino's Pizza. Domino's goes out and fixes the potholes, but then they have to, they get to spray on top a Domino's advertisement. You can actually look it up on the Internet and see it. I'm not here about Domino's, but I do love it. I'm resident of Placerville. My name is Eric Nelson. I'm Marine Corps Gunnery Sergeant. I did three tours. I got my honorable discharge. I'm here on behalf of the Veterans Center and representing all six veterans organizations. A few months ago, I heard a rumor that the city had approved a plan to turn our Veterans Building into a parking structure. Did the research, found out in 2009, yes, indeed, the city did approve a plan. It's called the Preferred Vision Plan, March 9, 2009. It was unanimously adopted by the city council. And essentially what it indicates would happen would be that the area where the Veterans Building is would be turned into a multimodal center, which, as I best understand, it would be a combination of what we see out by Walmart, where all the buses pull in at one time and people can transfer, and also a park and ride. Last week, at our monthly meeting of all the veterans organizations, we did have representatives from the transit agency who indicated that need for them was met by the new parking structure that they built across the freeway on the south side from the government center. And we asked them if they would give us something in writing that indicated they no longer need it. They weren't unable to do that at this time. What we'd like to do, we've written a proposed resolution for the city council, and I'd like to, I've got 12 copies with me. If I could submit it to the council, I would like to request that when you get to item 13 on the agenda, that you add it for discussion at the next meeting. We see this as a really friendly type of a thing. We know that you appreciate veterans, and we all appreciate the job you're doing. Essentially, it would simply ask you to strike six words from the 2009 plan, which indicates that the Veterans Center would be part of the potential multimodal center. There's one other location that's identified in the plan, so that would leave the other location still available. May I, I'm not quite sure the protocol. How can I give you the?
You're certainly welcome to give them to the clerk.
Okay.
We've already adopted our agenda for this evening, so we won't be able to do it tonight. Just so you know, this was brought to our attention at our last meeting, and that plan is now, I think it'd be safe to say outdated, and there is no intent by the city of Placerville to do anything that would affect the Veterans Hall in any manner, other than maintaining it as a viable facility. So, I can understand your concern, however, though, because there are official documents that reflect otherwise. So, if you wouldn't mind giving your information to our city clerk, and then we will check with our staff a little later on and see how that progress is coming on the previous request to do the same thing.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome. Thank you, sir, for your service. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item? Seeing no one else, I will go ahead and close public comment. Is there any written communication this afternoon, Mr. Morris?
No.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to consent calendar, all items will be considered or enacted under one motion unless a member of the council wishes to pull one for further discussion. Is there any items this evening, or just this afternoon, this afternoon that the council would like to further discuss? Let me ask if there's any member of the public that wishes to discuss or has a question on any of this afternoon's consent calendar items. If not, is there a motion? Oh, we have one comment.
On item eight point, oh, Sue Rodman, Placerville resident, on item 8.4, for $20,000 financial assistance from El Dorado County for the aquatic center, I wonder why we asked them for such a low amount. This has been $20,000 for several years now. It's not even keeping up with inflation. I think it should increase to at least $30,000 and then be indexed for inflation.
Very good comment. Thank you, Sue. That was a discussion at our budget meeting yesterday, going back and addressing the $200,000 deficit that I believe that the pool facility operates at every year, and asking for, maybe we should ask for $100,000. All right, any other comment, any other questions, comments from the public on consent calendar items? All right, bring it back to the council. Someone like to make a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Borelli and seconded by Councilmember Thomas. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. We didn't have any items pulled. Ordinances are public hearings. We have none this afternoon. Brings us to discussion items. Item 12.1, review, revised request for proposals for reuse of the historic City Hall and direct staff on how to proceed. Mr. Zeller, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, City Mayor Morris and members of the council. Before you today is a request to review the revised RFP for reuse of City Hall, and staff is looking for some direction in this staff report. At our last meeting, council requested revision and a re-release of the RFP. There's been staff work done to revise that RFP, and the revisions reflect the changes that created issues during the process at the last public meeting. Most notably, the notice of intent has been revised. There's been some changes in the requested information, and also an adjustment in the scoring system based on the comments reviewed at the last meeting. So, what we're looking for is some direction on this, but before we go there, please direct your attention to the new schedule within the staff report, and I just thought I would read that out loud for the record. We're looking for an approval of the RFP on June 25th. July 1st is the anticipated release date for distribution and advertising. There is a request from those proposers that they submit questions by the 19th of July, and then the city will follow up through my office on answering those questions no later than July 24th, and there are times specific within the RFP on all these dates. Then we're looking at closing out the proposals and having them due at the Community Services Department here in this building by July 31st, and then we'll go through a review, the first part of August. We're anticipating a presentation from applicants on August 19th, and then near the end of the month, there are recommendations made to the council based on all of that process beforehand. So, I can answer any questions you have based on the revised RFP or any questions that might have come up between the last meeting and today.
Thank you for that, Terry. Appreciate you reading the proposed schedule. That's very useful. Does any member of the council have a question at this point? Cleve, did you have some initial info?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to, one thing that I wanted to add, I want to thank Terry for his work on this and all that he's done to get this out. One point that we have in here also, by July 19th, anyone who is interested in submitting a proposal is required to submit their intent to submit a proposal to Terry Zeller. Those who do not submit that intent would not be allowed to submit a proposal. We want to make that clear so that they know that, that makes sure that we know who is proposing. We know they get the questions and the answers to the questions, and they know what the deadlines are. So, that is another addition that has been added to the proposal from the first round.
Does everybody understand? What, Cleve?
I would just add, that's very common. I mean, that's, I think, probably what we should have had the first time, you know, lessons learned, but that's a very common way to do it. That way, as the city manager just said, everyone gets the information, we know who exactly is on it, and there's a clear definitive cutoff with that intent proposal.
Is the intent to do another pre-review or where we have a committee reviewing, or would this be before the city council?
There is some, there's, within the RFP, there's the ability to either have it, have it go to a subcommittee or just have the council review the RFP.
And would you be asking us for that direction, then?
Yes, that's part of the, part of the direction that we're looking for.
Patty, did you have any questions? Kara?
No, no questions.
Okay, thank you. I think I had the same question you had, Dennis, too, is who would be that, I guess you would say on the August 19th date?
And then, John, on others, on item, I guess it's, what would it be? Let's see, page seven, item six. Is there any issues with freedom of speech issues in terms of restricting discussion?
Where are you, Dennis?
On page seven, item six.
Professional conduct requirement?
Oh, conduct, okay.
Or do we have the right to limit how people present themselves professionally as it is our building and our RFP?
Well, we have the right to require that people act in a professional manner and not necessarily disparage other people as part of their presentation and be negative. We have the right to say what we want in the proposals that are submitted. Now, when it comes before the council and somebody is comparing their proposal with another proposal, they certainly would have the right to say, well, this proposal isn't as good as ours because of these reasons, but to do it in a professional and non-disparaging manner, we have the right to require that as part of the presentation.
All right, as well, then, clarify that. Thank you.
I mean, we can't stop what they're going to do on social media and stuff like that.
Right. Those are all my questions.
Thank you.
Actually, I do have a question.
All right, Kara, yes, please.
Are we expecting that we may get more proposals out of this than the two that we've already heard?
That would, is a possibility. We don't know that. I have no information that we would, but it will be open to anyone, so we could.
I do have one question on page 11, under the first, when their city writes, number two, waive any irregularity or immaterial deviation in any proposal. That, to me, means a de minimis sort of deal, but I just want to, can we just say for the record what exactly that is so that there's no misunderstanding of what number two is
Again, I think it is, you know, de minimis type things that are minimal that we see that does not affect the outcome, but needs a correction.
You have to have a signature at the bottom of the line, or, I mean, something very small, like that would not affect the?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I just want to, just so, on the record, that it's a small thing. This isn't like you're missing financials or you missed a whole section that you just didn't respond to. This is a minor typo, something like that.
What you just indicated more of is substance and a substantial omission, if you will.
Right.
As opposed to something that is really just technical and immaterial in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
All right, before I open the public comment, I'm going to ask, were there any questions on the lease that was, has been prepared by staff? Make sure that we touch on that, because we do have, this is two different documents.
If I can just add to that, the lease is very rough. It was just kind of to give a format, essentially. There are some things that would have to be changed in that, we recognize, but it gives an idea of what we would be looking at going forward, then we would try to negotiate with the proposal that is successful, so.
Okay, very good. Michael, did you?
Yeah, I guess I do have one more question. I'll just put it out here now because I'd rather not get this later at a city council meeting when we've already had an application. So, if a proposal comes in and they don't have three years of financials, will they be automatically disqualified?
Not necessarily. I mean, let's say the organization has only been in existence for a year and a half, so they only have one year as a financial. It may have an effect on the wait that their proposal will be given, because they don't have enough data to really give a true track record, but it would not necessarily be automatically disqualified.
Okay, but it would go to their?
It would affect the wait.
Got you, understood. Thank you.
You can use that in the point system.
Patty, did you have any questions? You were a big part of that.
No, I just, when Cleve said that about the lease, and you said it might not be what it's going to be, that can't be used against us, can it, to change this thing? I mean, I don't want to see that happen again.
The idea behind the lease is to give the proposers some sense of what the city's going to require. For example, the fact that we want licensed people doing repairs, different things like that. It's to let people know what the city's going to require, so nobody's going to say, well, you didn't tell me that when I started this process. But we left a lot of things open to negotiation, you know, the remand, the term, et cetera.
Thank you, that's a good question. I had this similar concern. All right, if there's no other questions from council right now, I will go ahead and open public comment on this, item 12.1, the revised request for a proposal for reuse of the historic City Hall. Does any member of the public wish to address the council on this afternoon? And again, this is just a draft to be sent forward to be prepared for actual adoption at a future meeting. Good afternoon.
Hello. Okay, on the points table, I would like to see at least the maximum numbers for protecting historical character. You know, I see the feasibility getting, what, 30 points, and the historical protection was not weighted as well. To me, that's very important. It should be at least equal. 10 points for presentation, whoop-de-doo, you know, who's the best speaker, best dressed, maybe five points. Doesn't seem that important. But protecting the historical character, especially the exterior, and I'd really like, because once this contract is awarded, it disappears off behind, you know, city discusses, who, I don't even know who approves proposals. I think anything having to do with changing the exterior needs a public hearing. At least go to the planning commission and let the public give input on what is being proposed for the exterior, because that's how it works with the city adopting the Secretary of Interior guidelines. It applies to the exterior of historical buildings, not the interior. I'd like to see who it states who the city will authorize building changes. It's very vague in there. It says the city will consider and approve. Why is the Burn Engineering Report mentioned but not as an attachment to the RFP? I think that is a critical document. It's the most recent review of the building, and I really think you need to have her come back and give occupancy clearance before, I really can't believe people are on the confidence side without some kind of a yes from Burn, at least Lori Burn Engineering. And why only nonprofits can apply? Shouldn't any entity that can make it happen be allowed? I just don't understand why nonprofits only. The project could cost $3.5 million, partially because it looks like state law requires prevailing wage to be paid because it's a city-owned building. In the language, it looked like only professionals can work, do the work, engineers, architects, contractors. I'd like the city to put in a statement that volunteers can work under supervision of a licensed professional, just to make that clear, and that could help reduce some costs. I like the city doing progress reviews every year, kind of some checkboxes, some achievements along the way, and you'll get an idea within a year or two if this is a total nightmare or it has a chance. And then, like Mr. Thomas said, page seven, number six, a proposal can be negated due to negative comment in a public forum. To me, it kind of sounds like if somebody says something online, they can have their project revoked, and it just seems awfully wrong for government to be trying to control free speech for use of a public building. I could see if somebody was completely crazy, but just negative comments, got to tread carefully And then, I don't know if you anticipate using the same review committee, but I really don't think that was the best group you could have put together. I think maybe first they should have some knowledge on building construction or something related to it.
Look at your head of time, huh?
All right, two planning commissioners, two city councils, Cleve and whoever. And why are submissions only through email? Is the US mail not allowed? Again, maximum points for preserving the historical character.
Thank you, sir. Those are all excellent suggestions. Some other member of the public wishing to address the council on 12.1.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Perdicisi, and we've gone, me and a few other people have gone through the proposal and have marked it up quite a bit because we have lots of questions and then adjustments to language, things like that, and we're wondering whether we should bring it all up here, you know, is this a draft and we should bring it, send it to you in an email with our markups on it, because it is quite a lot of stuff that we're?
Well, you're certainly welcome to submit your comments to the city clerk, and if you want to do that electronically, that would be fine.
Okay. So, this is, this proposal that you're releasing today is considered the draft proposal for us to comment on before you release the final proposal that would be out by June 25th. Is that correct?
What we're doing is giving directions to staff on what they have presented, any input from the public that we receive, and then they will bring a formalized document that can still be changed.
Got it, got it.
Back to the city council on the 25th of June, correctly?
25th, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, there's no real, the only action this afternoon is just to, you know, tightening up, making suggested changes, that sort of thing.
Okay.
So, you're certainly welcome to submit that.
Yes, I would like to submit it in email so that you could review it and then, and check it against the document.
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
Cleve, is it?
Yes.
Regarding that, is there a conflict of interest if an applicant is commenting on the RFP?
Well, there's no applicants right now, because we just know RFP. We threw it all out.
No, not really.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, they, an applicant or a person, let's put it this way, a person or entity who is interested in the RFP and perhaps submitting a proposal certainly has a right to comment on things that they see in the RFP that may be an issue with respect to proposals.
And ultimately, it's our?
Ultimately, it's the council's decision.
So, since it's, since the email is perhaps being sent as I speak, we will see that more than likely in our next council member agenda packet, and that will be the comments from Lisa and her concerns.
Right, we will give you all of their comments and our recommendations on those.
And we have captured Mr. Drobish's comments also. All right. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on 12.1? Good afternoon. Please pull the microphone down. Thank you.
So, Sue Taylor, and that's kind of my concern, is that this is a draft and you're going to approve the final in two weeks, and so if there's all these comments submitted to you within the two weeks, will the city council be able to digest all that and have that for their next meeting to be able to have time to deliberate those items is my concern, because there's quite a few things in here that I have concern with.
Would you like to submit your concerns in writing or verbally this afternoon, or?
Well, I'm assuming that you're not making the final decision for two weeks.
No, we are not.
So, we have time to submit a full list of things that we could be concerned about.
And then they would become public record at the next meeting.
Okay.
And that's a good thing, because then everybody has an opportunity to see exactly what was submitted.
And I guess my concern is that this body will have enough time to digest all those things before, you know, I'm okay with it being public after it's submitted so that everybody kind of has time to look at it.
Well, I think we are up to the task.
Okay.
And... And we realize the need to keep this process moving forward and being very efficient with what we do, and very transparent.
Well, I know you are, I'm just saying that I want to make sure, normally it comes out like the Friday before, you know, it'd be nice if the public, once it's submitted, could have access to whatever comments might be presented.
Sure.
Thank you.
Let's see what we can do. Thank you, Sue. Is there another member of the public that would wish to address us on this item?
Friend Duchamp from Pollock Pines. Again, I am not a proponent on this. I was at both meetings, and I agree with the suggestion on the committee that it should be changed. My concern is that first meeting was not videotaped, and I'm requesting that if you do a committee meeting again, that it be videotaped. So, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on this? Seeing someone getting up.
Good evening, mayor, afternoon, early evening.
It is odd, isn't it? Oh, Kathy.
Mayor Cunyan, members of the council, Kathy Lishman, city resident. I have a tremendous amount of respect for this building, having spent sixteen years in there on a regular basis, when I served on the city council and when it was the City Hall. It's a very special building and it belongs to the community. What I would like to see is that the city itself, because it doesn't belong to any one person, it belongs to the city, that the city itself is the one who hires the work to be done on the building. And I would think that perhaps no volunteers would probably be a better idea than, I think that the people that do the work do need to be licensed, and I think it would be like any other project that the city has that someone has to get a permit for. I have a question about whether the city council or the city can make any changes to a proposal. If a proposal comes in and all of the proposals that come in, the city has some concerns about, can they make any changes to the proposal, or is it all or nothing? The city had a past experience with someone who worked in the building for a while and it didn't end up good. That's why I think the city should have control over who does the work on it. Because it's our building, it belongs to the community. And I did want to mention too about that last meeting, it was really quite interesting, but there was a motion that was made based on information that was presented that night, and the public had an opportunity to speak to that motion. And then when the public closed, the motion changed, and there were people in the audience that I feel that hadn't spoken at all, all day, that would have liked to have spoken on the motion that was ended up being adopted. It was just an observation, I probably didn't have anything to say, but I think that, you know, just the way it came about, it was a very difficult situation.
Thank you for your comments, Kathy. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council? Seeing no one else? Seeing Kirk Smith walking up.
Yes.
Good afternoon, sir.
Several concerns. The first is that the language about historical characteristics needs to be eliminated. It is so externally vague, it has no real meaning. It's like giving an applicant a blank check to do what they want. You already have adopted an ordinance related to the Interior Secretary's standards, guidelines for historic preservation. That should be used. Why? That's specific. Two, it's already in your rules. So why would you make a special exemption to help one party or any party over another? That's number one. If you believe that you really are serious about historic preservation, that needs to be followed. Secondly, you already have the structure of your government that we're going to have a planning commission, and this is in the purview of that body. Sometimes, there have been lots of exceptions made for them. There was property down at the other end of town, political family, and, oh no, the parking and all those kind of things, like the sign, they had no jurisdiction. We've heard that before. You can't do that in this instance. For the sake of consistency and principle, the historic guidelines need to be there, and two, it needs to be reviewed by the planning commission. Secondly, I'm concerned about the reference to these denigrating remarks that are alluded to about one group or another. I think that violates free speech. I've heard a number of people say, "Oh, well, I was denigrating the Arts Council." Fact is, I've attended large numbers of the events for more than a dozen years. I have consistently said that Terry and her husband are exceptionally charming, bright folks, consistently. That's not the issue. In the art world, you know, you have an exhibit, you have art, there's going to be criticism. My criticism has been for the city and the way it was handled, and I've thought I've made that a number of times very clear. Secondly, it's, thirdly, it's amusing of sorts to raise the subject of conflict of interest. Notice there's not one of you who ever talked about conflict of interest before that I know of. You didn't, for example, raise the issue of conflict of interest when you had the head of the Board of Directors for the Arts Council on the Blue Room Committee that considered this thing, and then as we later learned, it had been discussed for at least a couple of years. Nobody raised conflict of interest then, did they? But our county, our city manager pointed out a conflict of interest if we had the only employee of the only association that represents merchants on Main Street be involved, because that'd be a conflict of interest. But nobody ever said about that other matter. In fact, nobody ever said about a member of the planning commission coming here and saying some extraordinarily uninformed statements that were denigrating of the Mewoc. It was very troublesome. I mean, what even do you have, next that you can make references to colored people? I mean, it was the same kind of thing, if you know that background. My grandmother was at the funeral of Hoopokimbo in 1870. His name means bear killer. The Native Americans didn't have last names, so don't make these stupid comments about Italian last names. One of my friends is a Mewoc, his name is Smith. So, you know, conflict of interest is nonsense, you ought to have free, robust discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kirk. Appreciate your continued participation in this process. I believe the city manager and the city attorney were taking notes on those last couple of speakers. All right, is there anyone else in the audience? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close, public comment for this item, bring it back to the council for discussion, direction to staff. One of the things I think we want to make sure we do is get the comments that have been submitted electronically, maybe get them posted as quickly as we can as part of this process, so that those can be transparent and visible for everybody.
Can I clarify, that would only be any written comments that we received?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, what, thoughts? Written, well, we're getting some emails, obviously, as, yeah.
Not anything verbal, that's pretend tonight.
No, but we've all got, I know we've all got notes, and staff has taken notes on this. Okay. We've heard...
Has Terry gotten ready?
Terry, did you have any concerns with? It's hard to see you over there.
I know, I need to grow a little taller, get a better chair.
We need a better room.
Booster chair.
What was the question?
Are you comfortable with the information that you've received this afternoon from the public, and you're going to be receiving electronically over the next few hours?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I do think that we need some direction on whether we're going to have a subcommittee or not.
All right, very good. What's the thoughts on the council as far as the committee, a ad hoc committee goes? I'm going to ask Karen.
I would say no committee this time. I don't think we need it.
I agree.
I'll take the word of our two board, our two committee members to heart on that, so I would concur. Okay. So that will mean that the entire process will be heard by the city council here during a, you know, normal, regular, public meeting process. And our intent is to bring our final RFP back, a final draft, can you have such a thing? To, for adoption at our next meeting. Yes.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely, we're nowhere near done.
I do agree with Mr. Grobisch about possibly taking points away from the interview presentation part and directing that to the historic element.
Yeah.
I think that that was a good comment, and what does the rest of the council think on that?
I agree, and I also think that there should be, without going through it right now in a little bit more detail, is to make sure that it's clear that we expect the protection of the exterior elevations as they are. The harder you work to keep that, the, you know, you should gain credit for those types of efforts. He was concerned about the Burns report being included as a part of the application, and I would assume we absolutely will make that a part.
The item referred to as attachment two is actually the Burn Report, it doesn't have the Burn name yet, but that is the Burn Report.
So anybody that pulls one of these RFPs will have a copy of the Burns Report as a part of their application packet, so that's very good, because, I mean, he's absolutely right, we've all depended on that document for a number of different things. And I don't know, I think, believe you also said something about annual, whoever the successful applicants are would have to be subjected to, I don't want to say subjected, they would have to go through an annual review to prove that they were making significant progress.
That was part of the lease.
Is that part of it?
That's in the lease.
That's in the lease.
Yeah.
So, okay, very good, because that seems very common sense, and we do want to make sure whoever gets the buildings is on the road to success. There were a couple of different comments regarding volunteers, concerns to not have them, concerns to have them. There's so many variable liability issues that I could get yes, no, yes, as we go down.
Well, speaking as a property owner...
Yes.
And I have had some unfortunate events happen as a result of maybe one contractor working, but then a family member comes in, and after that person leaves, there's been some disasters, and I am just, I have it in my leases, they have to be a licensed contractor to do anything that concerns, there's just so many, you know, variables and things that can go wrong, and, you know, I just think it's necessary that we keep that in.
Would that prohibit a licensed contractor from bringing in volunteers if they wanted to? If they felt they wanted to take on that responsibility, how, how would that?
Well, you don't know who they're going to bring in. That's nebulous.
It puts a lot, it should, it puts a lot of responsibility on whoever the licensee for that type of work is.
There's, I think there's a workers' compensation issue, and I think potentially, I mean, I understand the use of volunteers, I think there may be a prevailing wage issue created by using the volunteers, and that they could come back and say, "Hey, I worked, I need to, I'm, you know, need to get the prevailing wage rate."
You could also potentially get a union claim...
Right.
By using volunteers.
So we're actually looking for what I would consider a good partner in this process with this RFP, and I think these types of questions would be addressed in the negotiation of the contract going forward, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And I think the RFP, well, aside from the comments that we do, I think we're really, our primary goal and concern right now is that, looking for that partnership and not necessarily the details of the, how are the works going to get done and how we move forward with that.
Good point.
Just my perspective.
Michael?
Yeah, just one, because I think this could come up later again. John, could you walk us through why this particular RFP does not have to adhere to the California Public Contract Code?
Yeah, I will. We're really looking, and the RFP is for a lease, it's not to construct necessarily a public work, if you will. We're not hiring somebody to build City Hall. We're looking for somebody to enter into a lease with who's going to occupy City Hall, and as part of what they're doing to occupy it, they are going to make the improvements in City Hall. It's not something that the city would otherwise have to do.
Got you, so it's not, because we're not, we don't have a service, and I guess my more underlying question on that is, we don't have to do an RFP, I mean, we could have just entered into a lease with somebody that we all agreed to.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
One point I want to make on that, one of the proposals you've always reviewed, I realize they've been thrown out, is proposing that they would do the fundraising, give the money to the city, and we would do the construction. Under that scenario, we would have to bid that out to do the construction, so that would apply to the Public Contracts Code at that point.
To that point, but prevailing wage would apply to this regardless, so...
That's our understanding, yes.
All right. Are there any other comments? Have we given sufficient, excuse me, sufficient direction to staff as to what we're looking for? No committee? The changes in the weighting of the historic points, protection of the exterior, the Burns Report we know is going to be in there, and as Dennis mentioned, some of these other things get down to actually whoever gets selected, you know, refining how the city applicant contracts will work.
I was just going to say, I like the idea, we probably should have referred to, and we will add some language referring to the Secretary of Interior's standards for historic buildings...
That's right.
That they will need to be adhered to as a result of that. So we will add language relating to that also.
All right, and then just, just as a comment, Cleve or John, let me know if this is correct. Once an applicant is selected and we've gone through this process, and they come forward with some particular change that would normally involve something that the planning commission would review, do you see that happening in this instance? I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but I want to make sure that we are following our own process.
I'm not sure why that wouldn't happen or shouldn't happen, quite honestly, yeah.
So those, whatever that successful applicant may be suggesting...
Yeah, if it's a change that would normally come under the purview of the planning commission, then yeah, it should go to the planning commission.
All right, very good. So then, do we need to mention that anywhere at this point, or is that one of those things that comes up, as Dennis said, later on when we're actually one-on-one? Because we don't know what an applicant, what we're going to be receiving at this point.
The place probably for that is when we're negotiating the lease, and we see exactly what the improvements are, that they want to make tenant improvements to the building, and then, of course, if something were to come up with regard to the exterior, that, wait a minute, you know.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And I think we can make that very clear.
Okay, good. Well, let's just then be, it'll be part of the record from this meeting, that that was a concern that was brought up, and if, if the successful applicant does propose something that requires planning commission review, then certainly it will go through that process. All right.
So what, does that mean, like, the things that have been already mentioned, and I don't think I'm speaking out of turn by saying this, but like, for instance, restoring the balcony? Is that what you're talking about? Would that have to go back to the planning commission, something like that?
I think it's, and I'm going to look at Pierre on this, but I think it's primarily, let's say that they decided to change the front of one of the buildings, more the exterior is what we're talking about.
Right, but then, so the balcony would be an issue, I mean, that's exterior.
Yes. I guess the question, Pierre, would be, the balcony was there at one time, if they want to put it back, does that require planning commission review?
If it's same-for-same, it would not, I would not need to go to the planning commission for review. If they look at changing anything in the exterior, then it would be subject to site plan review process through the planning commission.
Okay.
If the council so desires, again, you know, the council has the ability to opt out of our own zoning ordinance, if that's the desire of the council, or you can just direct that it go through the same process that a private applicant would go through.
All right. So same-for-same, but staff would review that and make that determination?
That is correct.
If they were calling for an eight-foot-high wrought iron railing out there, similar to something in New Orleans, you would spot that and say, "Not consistent."
Yeah, that is correct. They will be subject to a, or, you know, the city always requires a building permit on itself, just so that we have it in the record that it followed the Title 24 of the Building Code. So during that process, and we review the applicability of the zoning code and the requirements of doing a site plan review during that process.
Very good.
Thank you. Good questions. All right, is there any other direction for staff? Cleve, do you need any additional information from the council? This is, we're not asking, we're not taking any action this afternoon. Terry, do you need, did you have any other questions or comments?
No, I feel like I have good notes in between the notes I've taken and the notes that Cleve and John have taken, and the minutes, I think, we'll be able to address all of the public comment and the comments from the council.
All right, thank you. And thank you very much for taking this on so early in your career here with the city. This is an important building, as you can tell, so we need to, we really appreciate your efforts on this going forward.
Thank you.
All right, so that was... So that was, that is item 12.1. That'll take us on to item 12.2, Adopted Resolution Approving an Agreement with California Energy Resource Conservations. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This one's been a long time coming. As you recall, the city contracted with Johnson Controls back in 2015 to do a study to look at energy efficiency projects, both water and energy efficiency projects in the city. We proceeded through several iterations of that to where they came up with recommendations of what was feasible for us to do. We entered into a project development agreement in 2017, and since that time, we have been putting together, looking at different financing options to move the projects forward. Projects were divided into two different projects. One is the one you are looking at tonight, which is indoor/outdoor lighting for our facilities and replacement of our heating and air conditioning units for City Hall, Town Hall, and the police station. The second project that is not before you tonight yet is the installation of a solar field at the wastewater treatment plant. That one is still working on the financing. We have an application into the State Water Resources Board, and that's being reviewed right now. We're waiting to hear on that one. So tonight before you, as I mentioned, is the indoor/outdoor lighting for our facilities and the, and the replacement of our heating and air conditioning units at City Hall, Town Hall, and the police station. So before you tonight is to approve the agreement with the California Energy Commission for a loan to finance the project. As shown in the document, the total loan cost is eight hundred and, or, excuse me, $732,000. The payback for that would be used from savings. The estimated savings on the project is $56,000 per year. Estimated payment at this time is $52,000. So based on our calculations that we've done and review, we have determined that the savings are sufficient to pay for the debt service and other reviews and et cetera, staff time et cetera, that will be required to review this. So it will pay for it. There's not a lot of benefit, as you can see, there's not a lot of money we're going to gain out of this. The big exception I find in that is that we need to replace these heating and air conditioning units. Without this, we would be looking at doing it with cash or financing it some other way. We could finance those individually, but by doing this, the benefits of the lighting and the heating and air conditioning units together do pay for the cost of replacement over time. So with that, staff is recommending that we enter into this agreement with the California Energy Commission to take out this loan. The interest rate on the loan is 1%, which is a very good rate that we're able to get, and allow us to move forward with this agreement. What we're asking is to allow the city manager to sign the agreement and move that forward to the California Energy Commission. We estimate that, and in addition to that, we will give the notice to proceed to Johnson Controls, and they will begin their process. And actual replacement of the units probably will not happen for about three months, or the project, that's when it would start. By the time they do their analysis and then order the equipment and et cetera, we're looking two to three months down the road. So with that, I'd be happy, either myself or Mr. Warren can answer any questions on the loan and the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Cleve. I would like to ask Mr. Warren if he had any additional words of wisdom he would like to add.
No, Cleve covered all the items I was going to mention or thought to mention, so.
So you're comfortable, you're comfortable with 1%?
That's a very good rate.
Okay. Point five is better.
If you were looking at a capital lease, for example, you would be looking at probably in the mid threes, low fours.
Oh, wow.
So it's a very good rate, 1%.
Yeah, I know it may not show, but I'm hoping all these units will just hold on for three more months, because there's some of them that are.
They're limping.
Rough shape. Questions from the council on this item for staff?
So the lighting, is it just, it's replacement of, are they going to have to do like the whole mechanism, or is it?
No, but actually what they're going to is LED lighting in all of our facilities. I don't think that, they've got new lighting out now that they don't have to replace the entire fixture, that they can adapt it to the new LED lighting, so that's what their plans are.
How about our stage lighting?
That's included. I'm not sure exactly what that's going to be, but we might brighten you up a little bit.
Oh, wow, it'll be great or something.
We'll all get a suntan.
Terry, did you have any questions?
Nope. I met with Cleve earlier and kind of went over any miscellaneous questions that I had, but I do, I just want to say that I think it's great that we'll be able to pay for not just the interest, but the entire loan payments with energy savings. And get, you know, staff new HVAC systems that they need and upgrade our outdated lighting and all that, so I think, I think it's a great thing.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments over here? I'm going to open a public hearing.
I would.
Just staff questions right now. I'm getting a little ahead of myself.
All right, staff questions. What was the rate for the kilowatt per hour that was used to do the calculations? I tried to work on the math, but, I mean, do you recall what that is?
I don't have that in front of me, and it really depends on the particular facility.
Did they have escalators in there for the rate, or was it current rate, not assuming?
They do have escalators based on 4% increase, annual increases.
Okay.
So one thing I didn't mention is the JCI contract has a savings guarantee in it. That was based on, at the time that they, their base year was 2014, Dave, right, or 15?
15.
2015. But that escalator applies even then, so the savings increase over time due to escalators in the rate. So they guarantee that if we don't realize the savings, then they make up the difference. In addition, there is a provision in the contract, I don't know if you saw that, that I brought it out, that if they are, if the savings are not realized and we are not able to meet those payments, we're allowed to renegotiate the agreement with, with the CEC to make that work, so.
I saw that. I think that's a good thing, too.
Pretty amazing.
Feel a little more comfortable.
Thank you, Dennis. Michael, did you have any questions for Cleve or Mr. Warren? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council on item 12.2? Good afternoon. Sue.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. This has been a long time coming, that's for sure, and it looks to me like the only one I had concerned about, and my main concern is, by the time we reach the end of life for these units, will we be back in the same position we are right now, or are they going to outlast the cost to replace them?
All right, we'll see what we can find out for you. Is that it? Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on 12.2? Seeing no one else approaching, I will close the public comment on 12.2 and bring it back to the council for action. The question of, will these units outlast their loan?
Dave and I asked that question today of the consultant when we met with them, and the answer is yes. Most of this, these, I mean, you can always have one go bad, that's unexpected, but yes, they will outlast the financing, the 15-year financing that is proposed.
How old are the ones we have now?
Eighteen, forty, I don't know. No, I apologize.
I'm tongue-in-cheek, but I know things have really improved, you know.
Some of them are pretty old. They're, actually, since this report, well, not this report, but the original report was done, we had, I believe, two units go out here at Town Hall that we had to replace, and we had to, we removed those from the list.
That's been wonderful.
We have one, we have one unit at City Hall that is currently out, and we're trying to, Regina and I are trying to limp along until, until we, until hopefully we can get this replaced, so. So, yeah, we, they are in need of repair, or replacement, so.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move for the option.
A second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thomas. All right, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor? I was going to want to comment, too.
Yeah, sure.
Because I, you, well. I'm sorry, you were going to move it, I'm sorry. No, no, it's all right. We went through that quickly. I just had one more comment. I agree with Sue when we talk about not having the money in 15 years to do this, and I know that it's always a stretch and a challenge to do, to have money available and set money aside for future expenses, and I know that, that we dealt with that when the pool came around and didn't have the money for that. And I know that we don't have that, but I just, I understand, I respect what you're saying, and right now, we can't do that, and I agree with you, at any chance we can in the future, I'm going to support and, and hopefully move down that road, but I don't see that, but just thoughts.
Can he come in?
I have a, this is for our city manager, Cleve, I remember the negotiation, I remember when Johnson and Johnson came up and we talked about everything, and they presented a whole big plan, and we really, I had such high hopes that we were going to get a lot more done than this, and a lot of it's been, unfortunately, we can't afford it or whatever. Are we still going to consider some of those things, or is it just, is the rest of it just dropped now?
No, not completely dropped. There's a, this is phase one. There is a phase two, and one of the big items in phase two is our leak detection system and replacement of our water meters to do automated meter reading.
Yes.
Those are two of them that we were pretty high on, but felt that these were more important to start with. But those are still out there, and we can pursue those once we get these going. Dave, was there anything else to add to that, or?
Yeah, just to piggyback on the water meter project, they actually replaced approximately 130 meters and did a study, so we have hard facts that if we went to an automated system and replaced the old meters, that we would gain, you know, further efficiencies in water use and billing.
And, of course, I'm still beating the drum for solar. And I know that some of the, you know, places that we had proposed are, they're not agreeing that they're probably, like, for instance, the top deck of the parking lot, you know, that I thought was really going to be a great thing, but now we're still talking about the water plant, aren't we?
Yeah, that's a solar.
Yeah, the wastewater plant, that's the second, that's the second part of this that will be.
So it's taken us four years to get here?
Fortunately, the sun keeps coming up.
Is there any way that we can, now that we're, I mean, we've gone through all this, that maybe we're going to be encouraged to make it move a little faster, or?
Well, part of the, part of the problem, especially with the solar at the wastewater treatment plant, has simply been, it's taken us almost a year to get through the actual application process. Now we've submitted the application, it's probably another six months at least for approval. So that's been the key part there, and I don't know if you remember right, we used Steve Herrera to prepare that application for us. There's no way we could have done it on a staff. He did a great job for us in communicating with them and getting that done. So, yeah, we can, we can look at some of these other items. I know that, I think it was Pierre and I talked, that there is another gentleman that is, still thinks that, separate from JCI, that the solar on the third floor might, might be feasible, and he wants, wants to talk to us about that. Is that right, Pierre?
Yes, so that's correct. We've been approached by two different applicants that would like to propose that.
Yeah. So we will, we will pursue those. Johnson Controls said it was not feasible due to the cost and other items of, you know, putting the covers up there that would hold the solar, but we, we don't turn them away, we will talk to them.
With those double S sheet devices?
Yes.
For the cars?
Yeah, they'd be similar to what you see in, in other areas. For example, at the hospital, they have those at their parking lot, so, so yes, they do.
When was the last time we talked to, to them about the third floor? Because, because the price of solar has come down considerably the last four years, so I'm wondering if.
We haven't really talked.
It might pencil out now.
Yeah, we haven't talked to Johnson Controls about it since, you know, probably 2015 particularly, but we do have these others that we have talked to, and we'll continue to work with them and see if it is feasible to do.
I would just hate to see it go another four years or what. I mean, if we can, you know, we can find a way, I would really like to.
Good point, Michael. Yeah, Michael's point, that's four years, it's a, it's a whole new industry.
Too long.
Four times over. They changed a lot. All right, moving on, we have a little bit more work to do this afternoon. Request for future agenda items. I wanted to, is there any council member, I had one question for staff on the gentleman's concern about the Veterans Hall and the submission of his request. That was brought up a few weeks ago, and we were, we had requested that the process begin to get that removed. Do we need to formally agendize that to honor the work that needs to be done?
Staff's, staff's the only thing, we can do it. We just, from a staff perspective, we, we understand what they're saying, we don't really think it's necessary, and it's a little bit of work that we have to go through to put all that together and get it agendized, make sure, and then, once you've got it done, do you go back and completely, you know, reprint the plan and have it up there where it's out there? So those were some of the questions. We were hope, actually hoping that there was another way to do it, in that perhaps we just, as we mentioned, write a letter to them to say, you know, we understand this was in there at one time due to changes, et cetera. It's my understanding that when that was put in there, that they, the plan was that they were maybe going to move the Veterans Hall, is that correct, Pierre?
Yes, it's, it's staff's understanding that the time that the plan was written, there was a proposal from the veterans that they were going to move their facility to another location, which would have opened up their current location as a potential park and ride. There was actually more than one park and ride that was discussed in the plan, and it was just a, let's just say, just a proposed location, and so from staff's perspective, it would be very, very time-consuming on staff's limited time that we have going on with our current workload, to go through the whole process, to amend, basically just trying to remove a couple of lines in the report. We'd have to bring it to the Planning Commission, they would make a recommendation, it would come to the council, and as the city manager pointed out, the printing and all the, all the administrative work we would do to amend the plan, it's completely unnecessary, given the fact that Western Placerville Interchange is building the park and ride, which negates the requirement that we have any of those current park and rides that are in the proposed document. So it's, it's a moot point from our, from staff's perspective.
All right, thank you very much for that, Pierre. Appreciate you answering that on the fly. Perhaps it's something that, if it's with the agreement of the council, the city manager, and I can work on drafting a letter to address the fact that.
Could I ask a question?
Not a reality anymore.
I didn't think we owned that building, and.
Well, again, there were a whole other series of events that were going to take place that are now not occurring, so.
Because it's on the fairgrounds, and that, the county, and, so I didn't know if it was because of, maybe something happened with Placerville Drive that it was, became our property?
Yeah, staff could add. That is a separate parcel from the fairgrounds, and it is owned by Eldorado County.
That's, so why, okay.
Well, again, a plan from.
We would have had to either purchase it or get an agreement with Eldorado County to put that park and ride there in the future. It wouldn't be that we would obtain, we would have to obtain it somehow, or maybe they maintain a park and ride.
Okay, so, all right.
It was a, kind of more of a master plan kind of a thing.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you. Did you have any, any new agenda item you'd like to add?
Well, I've got something you might have to help me out procedurally with, I'm not sure if this is the right place, but there's been a lot of talk downtown about a franchise moving in.
Oh, yeah.
And could we, if, if the rest of the council agrees, maybe ask the Planning Commission to take a look at the ordinances regarding franchises and chain stores downtown, and then have it come back to council?
Sure. We could ask, well, we would ask the planning staff to, to give us a report on the current role, or what authority the city would have under controlling such things.
I'll try and wing this one as well. Some years ago, the city council amended our code such that in the central business district, any proposed formula business requires a conditional use permit. And when you look at the findings that need to be made to approve that conditional use permit, the, the purpose is to protect the historic and cultural character of the downtown Main Street area, and so staff will be looking at the proposal and how it will affect the exterior building, and how that would then affect the historic and cultural character of downtown. It's staff's understanding that all they're proposing to do to the exterior is swap out the sign, instead of saying Centro, it's going to say, you know, Sourdell &amp; Company. And so they're not proposing any changes to the exterior. Still requires a conditional use permit, but I think we'll be able to make the findings from staff's perspective to the Planning Commission that they could go ahead and move forward. forward. So the way the CUP is written is it's not to forbid or exclude a formula business from locating in our downtown Main Street area, but, but to ensure that the building itself doesn't become a sign, if you will, like a lot of larger chain restaurants and, and certain businesses become. And so the Planning Commission will make the final decision on that conditional use permit, but it would be subject to appeal to the city council within 10 working days of that, of that decision. If it's the desire of the council that we become more restrictive on, on that kind of business, the formula business, we've, staff has looked at the city of Carmel, Arcata, there, and I think Nevada City, they do restrict the locating of formula business within their commercial districts. For example, the city of Carmel excludes them entirely, cannot locate a formula business within the city of Carmel. That's the prerogative of the city council. But we have an application, they've submitted that application in good faith in accordance with our current code, so staff would recommend that maybe if, if you are interested, you can direct staff to come back with a, with a resolution of intent to amend our zoning code, if, if you wish to further restrict the locating of formula business in our central business district.
And just to clarify, I don't think that we should be reactive to this current application. I'm more thinking about going forward, if that's something that we want to, you know, put a stop at new formula businesses coming into downtown.
So that would be an item that we would add to planning department's workload, so, yeah, let's, we can.
So that's just for the downtown? Because I remember.
Yeah, not, not all of Placerville.
I remember all the hoopla and McDonald's wanted to come in, and everybody in town wanted, didn't want them here, and we were threatened with a lawsuit and everything. That was a long time ago.
It was a big deal, I remember it.
Yeah.
So my question would be then, is that the desire of the council to send that to the Planning Commission to consider that and then bring a recommendation back?
I would support that.
Sure.
Okay.
At least they have a discussion.
Sure.
And I think it's important, the spaces.
We have that direction.
Down there become more and more valuable, and the impacts can be irreversible.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have one request, or, I may have missed this, and I apologize if I did, but I know we had discussed in the budget the online capabilities for water payments. And I don't know if that just fell off or was still there, but I'd love to have that discussed. I still think there'd be efficiencies there, and we'd end up saving money and a lot of other things, but, so if that could be an item, if, if it's not, so.
May I?
Sure.
You actually have an active CIP for that. It got deferred due to other workload impacts, but our goal is this summer to finish that project.
So we'd say, it is deferred, but it's just because of timing. It is funded.
It's funded.
So we can, it's already in there and can get it done.
Perfect.
It's just timing to get it done.
All right, that's great. Thank you.
All right, thank you for asking the questions. All right, city manager, staff reports?
Nothing further tonight.
All right, thank you. Upcoming items scheduled for our next meeting on June 25th include agreement with the IRS for services at the Alastirater facility, Broadway Storm drain project, design contract with REY, cancellation of the July 23rd meeting, and we're going to also have a human trafficking presentation from, I believe that is the Sir Optimists and the county that have that presentation, and a couple other exciting items. So if there's being no other business this afternoon, I will go ahead and adjourn us until our next regular meeting, which is on June 25th, with a 6:00 PM open session.